Oh, yeah. Look at the computer, you're late, but alrighty. We are calling the Village Board of Trustees meeting for August twenty-third to order roll call, please.
Trustee Brochus.
Here.
Trustee Thuzius.
Here.
Trustee Brenner.
Here.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Here.
Trustee Hartman.
Here.
Trustee Kettlebator.
Here.
President Langfeld.
Here. Alright, just right for the political allegiance. Political allegiance to the United States somewhere. To develop a religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the timeline of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody?
Uh, we did not have anyone sign up for public comments this evening.
Okay. We will, we are at the consent agenda upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business.
I'm going to approve consent agenda as per.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All hold same. Uh, report of village office. I've just got two things. I was on the board review on Tuesday for an Eagle Scout from our Boy Scout group here across Plains. And at the end of it, they asked me to go outside and they presented a award to the village. It's from our troop and it's the Mohawk District of Glacier Edge Council hereby recognizes the village of Cross Plains as the twenty twenty-one community organization of the year. So congratulations to everybody and they, most of the Maradon Misses, all staff has been very helpful for that Boy Scout troop and allowing them to use the parks and do stuff like that. So that was very nice. The other thing is just, I just want you to be aware of it in case you hear rumors and stuff. There were a number of people down on Loffenberg that's not happy with the road going through. I met with them a couple of Fridays ago. It was, I let them vent quite a bit and then we had a discussion. Their main concern, what they wanted was to have that as a service drive. I gave that information to Bill. We met with staff which included the fire chief, the police chief, public works director, our village planner, our village attorney. We talked it over. It was their strong recommendation that we keep it as is, as a throughway. I shared that with the group. They still were requesting a joint meeting with staff and the board to go over that issue. I told them that I thought that was unreasonable, that I would not be doing that. And then we've offered Bill and I to sit down with the group again to see if we can do things to help alleviate some of the concerns without putting a service drive in there. So this is just information in case you hear something. Alright. Village Vice President.
Um, just a couple of things real fast. The Optimist had a fundraiser on Saturday night at Montez and they did very well and the money will be going towards the kids in their village. And then the other fundraiser that's coming up is the Chamber and Northwest Dane have part together a golf podium. It's September seventeenth at Lake Wisconsin and there is still time to sign up for it. And then we're going to split the, the proceeds for that between those two. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other trustee? You have something, Bill?
Uh, just to let you guys know, speaking of Boy Scout troop eighty-seven, uh, here across Plains, September eleventh, they'll be celebrating fifty years of being a troop. Uh, and so they're bringing all the old scout masters in and the Eagle Scouts and all that should be here. So it's gonna be over at, uh, uh, PI. So, yep, I'm, yeah, yeah. So, uh, congratulations to the, the Boy Scouts for fifty years.
Alright, Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that the aspiring anti-racist across Plains is in the three of four meetings with Rudy Baxter and the series that we're running with the Middleton Equity Project. It's been very nice engaging with community members in Cross Plains and Middleton about issues equity and race. Uh, I'd also like to give a shout out to Public Works and Parks and Rec after the tornado that came through town. Uh, they did a phenomenal job of picking up brush and getting the pool back so the kids can enjoy it to the last moment of summer. So thanks to those folks.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Village Administrator.
Hey, Dre Adams here. First off, uh, Village Staff Emergency Team is working on the head of mitigation planning uh, with Dane County. Uh, as part of the steering committee, uh, we, we are opening it up to people who may be interested in that planning process. If you are interested, uh, as a board member or as a resident, or if you know someone that could benefit that group, uh, please let me know and I can send more information on that up. Uh, second here, uh, the Joint Review Board on, uh, for tax increment district number three will be meeting, or its annual meeting on September first at four thirty. That will be here in this room and also online. That agenda has been posted and the tax increment district annual report has been posted on the website. And if you want me to email you, wanna definitely do so, again, let me know. Then third here, uh, we did get news that we, uh, received, uh, our, our application for a parking right grant, uh, through Dane County for the KP Trail Section. Didn't get accepted. Uh, this was for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, fifty, fifty match. Uh, with the local commitment of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the grant agreement, uh, is still, uh, being produced for the village's review and officially set up. But you'll see that in your capital improvement plan, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Oh, just quickly, I know, uh, the county executive, uh, Preisey will be announcing that at noon on Wednesday at the Pleasant View Golf Course in.
What are they announcing?
The, the awarding of the, the. That's all I have.
Alright, any other reports? Alright, we'll go to general business. Presentation of Well Three drilling bids and possible action on a board of bid.
They have, Evan Chambers from Town Engineering, uh, providing, uh, presentation. And then go ahead, uh, you know, such we are, to your, uh.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so good evening, everybody. Um, we took bids on the drilling, just the drilling of Well Three last week, Tuesday. Did have two general contractors bid municipal well and pump, which you may recall from the test well, um, last fall, and then Sam's well drilling. Um, the, the way we outlined that bid was base bid is just to drill, just to drill the well. Um, the minimum needs for the project moving forward. We had a supplemental bid item for geophysical logging, which is what the Wisconsin Geological and Natural History Society does, or, uh, excuse me, history survey. That was part of the test well and we put it in here again just to see if that's something we wanted to explore further. And then we have additive bid items which are for potential uranium investigations, which if you'll recall from the test well, we drilled, um, an upper or a shower interval, which is where Well Three is now, but we also explored deeper into the aquifer down to eight hundred feet for some potential growth if, uh, if needed, more capacity if needed. That lower interval did have a hit on uranium, so we put in some additive bid items to explore that further if desired in that existing test well. So that was kind of the conditions of the bid. Um, the table right there in the center is kind of summarizes what happened. So the base bid, just again for drilling down three hundred and fifteen feet for the new well, um, municipal well and pump was two hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-four dollars, and Sam's well drilling was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Supplemental bid items are there. Again, same scope for each. One was thirteen thousand, one was twenty-five hundred, and then the additive bid items for the uranium ranged from about a hundred and twenty thousand to seventy-seven thousand. Um, in terms of bid submittal process, Wisconsin statutes do require that general contractors submit pre-qualifications if they have not done a project for the village within a year. Um, those are supposed to be turned in five days prior to bid date. Sam's well drilling did submit them. It just came with the bid. Um, so there was, there's a minor technicality with them. Uh, and in terms of breakdown, um, I'm anticipating a little discussion on the additive bid items, but in terms of just base bid, you would obviously end up having municipal well and pump. If you wanted to do the supplemental bid item, it would then flip that to Sam's. We did talk through the supplemental bid a little further, given that the test well, this geophysical logging already happened in the test well fifty feet away. All the indications we're getting are you're not going to get much for additional information doing that geophysical logging again on the new well. Um, so from our perspective, uh, we have, at the bottom line there, given the recommendation to award base bid and if desired, any of the additive bid items. Uh, before I stop, I will kind of hit on those so that the big things to think about on the additive bid. You have a test well that's drilled there to roughly eight hundred feet. As soon as Well Three gets drilled, DNR is going to be very antsy to get that test well filled back in because that's a potential conduit for contamination, um, before you get your new well fired up. So we have the hole there now, but it's going to have to be filled in soon. Did have the two intervals that were sampled, the lower interval had the hit. We're drilling the new well above that. Uh, and then it's a consideration of, do we want to invest the seventy to a hundred thousand dollars for exploration now for something that may be needed in twenty years, but maybe not be needed in twenty years? Um, and then weighing the options of, do we really want to drill that well further or would we be looking at a well for in an alternate location in the village? So the, the additive bid item, again, I, I come to you with that as more of a discussion point. Hard for me to give you a, a firm recommendation either way because there's obviously some risk, um, in doing so. You may or may not use it. Uh, the other thing to consider is it's, it's groundwater. We're not going to be able to guarantee, nobody's going to guarantee that twenty years from now that report, these findings are sound. Um, and I would expect if we did want to drill deeper twenty years from now, I'm using twenty, who knows when it'll be. I'm anticipating there'd be a little more exploration before anybody would buy into a report that's twenty plus years old. So it's not, certainly not cut and dry. Again, I think back on the base bid, that's, that's where we're at. At a minimum, you have to do the base bid. Uh, it makes sense to proceed with municipal well and pump on that supplemental bids. We're not, we would not recommend just because you're, you did it once already fifty feet away. And then the additive bits would have to be a board decision.
Well, didn't we, didn't you find out that there was a bunch, there was a lot, a higher concentrate of iron at eight hundred feet?
Lower interval also had higher concentrations of iron, yes.
Yeah, so I don't think that's going to change fifty feet away in an aquifer. I mean, I'm just thinking if we investigate a new well down here, it's not going to change anything.
Right.
Alright, do I have any, when anybody, uh, going for the supplementary, supplemental or additive bids? Are we just talking, right, can I have a motion to accept the base bid then?
I don't make a motion to accept the base bid from Midwest Well Services as presented.
I'll say.
Alright, I have a motion in a second to accept the Midwest Well Services base bid. Any discussion? All, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yeah.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yeah.
Trustee Kettlebator.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Alrighty.
Okay, just quickly, I want to take a motion to reject the supplemental and the additive, just to be clear.
We don't want to have a debate.
No, we, we made a motion just to, to accept the base bid. Would you think that's good enough?
No.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only, the only caveat there that I failed to mention obviously is we are still awaiting PSC approval. Um, all indications are it's going to go through, but we will not be able to issue notice to proceed to the contractor until we have PSC approval in hand. Um, so the reason we bring this this month is instead of having to wait another month, we can kind of do the contractual stuff now, anticipating PSC about four weeks from now and then hit the ground running and not have to wait until the September meeting to get these approvals, so. Do you have notice of award that was assuming base bid? Do you want to sign that? Do you want me to leave that?
You can leave that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, alright, can we move on?
That's all I have, thank you.
Really, okay, okay. Uh, number two is discussion and possible action on a request for sewer adjustment for three thousand eight Finnis Street. So you see the recommendation from staff and you see the letter.
Any questions that we can answer or can you add to the.
How did we handle these before, you know?
So policy states that, uh, generally in case where it's evident that the water has gone into the ground, uh, uh, it's approved. In this kind of situations where it's a mechanical defect, uh, and or that it's returned to the sewer system, uh, in the past, we deny the request. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's set out in the policy.
Any other questions otherwise that have a motion, please?
I, I just have a quick question. I, I remember seeing one of these in a few meetings past and there was recommendation specifically written out by you. No?
Yeah.
Do you have one of those for us today?
Yeah, so the recommendation actually comes from the director.
Oh, I forget, I have to, page forty-four. Okay.
Hi, Bill?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we go with staff recommendation on the water issue at three zero zero eight Finnis Street across Plains and not offer a refund, uh, for the additional sewer feed.
Alright, go ahead in a second. I'll say it. Alright, I have a motion in a second to deny the request. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All hold same.
Hold same.
Aye.
Yeah, well, we have Shane and who else?
Andy moves.
I mean.
Yeah, I, I voted against it.
You're what?
I voted against it.
Okay, so do we, can we have one abstaining and one voting no? Alright, discussion and possible action on a request for a block party on the eighteen hundred block of Park Street for September sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Want an explanation on this before?
Sure, go ahead.
You vote on it? Okay, so we received a, uh, the application for a special permit for a block party. That's for the eighteen hundred block, Park Street, which is between Mills Street and Wilson Street. Uh, my understanding that, that, uh, these type of events have, for, uh, as per process procedure, uh, we did get this out to our, uh, department heads, uh, for review. Uh, there are some concerns from, uh, the staff in regards to utilizing, uh, Park Street for a block party as it is an emergency route. Uh, and that we haven't allowed for a block party on a, a major street previously. Uh, so that's one issue. Secondary issue where is, uh, the control or enforcement or regulation of, uh, drinking, uh, alcohol, uh, beer, private property versus on the street and public property. Uh, there's particular statutes and bill ordinances that prohibit, uh, drinking, uh, public property, especially on streets. Um, then that being said, uh, another issue here is, is just that we, we were flagged here that, uh, event states ten participants uh, for all of our requirements for special events, we require that the public event be open, or that the special event be open to the, the public. Uh, obviously, if, uh, we think about this type of event for an achievement, you know, for social reasons, uh, the bigger you allow for, for the open to the public, the bigger it gets. Uh, the question becomes how do you, are you wrap control around that? Uh, and so you'll see in staff report, uh, comments that, in fact, they do have a comment in there that a lot of other communities regulate block parties by separate ordinance, so as part of uh, their decision this evening, I would recommend that, that we look at it in order for that. Now, in regards to special events and denial of special event permits, the, the code is very specific as to the reasons to, uh, deny a, a special event permit. Not in section twenty-two point two-two. What I've done is I've gone ahead and listed, uh, those sections that, that may apply. Um, it would be up to their decision on whether or not they meet those standards. Uh, if you do decide to approve this, uh, permanent application, staff, yes, that, uh, you consider the following conditions. You do have the police chief and, um, you're a great, uh, facilities director here for additional.
Does anybody have any questions? Judy and then Bill?
Um, we have actually done these before and years ago when I was on. I would like to say I wouldn't like to see Park Street. I wonder if they could live with if we did it from Wilson Street to Seaman Street, I think it is, on the side, rather than Park. I'm not for closing out Park Street, but if they could go on the side, I think economy today, it's like four driveways that would affect if we went that way instead of Park Street. And it's short hours, so I would, I would be okay with it if they just switched the road.
That was my biggest concern too. Bill?
Do we require insurance, uh, for block parties? Or for special events like this? I know, I know we, we require insurance for other special events, but I don't.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the ordinance states that for special events, uh, for which it defines a block party, yes, uh, that we would require insurance for that. My understanding in the past, we haven't, uh, when, you know, when Judy references previous block parties. I do know that the strength of, uh, the bar for obtaining, uh, insurance that would cover what the village is looking for, uh, a residential policy for that, would be a special commercial type policy, even, uh, you know, some non-profitized, uh, find it challenging to do that.
Right.
College.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Kevin and then, uh?
Yeah, I guess I don't have a problem with Park Street because we have Main Street a block away and we have, uh, what is it, Seaman, another block away, so I guess I don't have Parker or, or Park Street. Uh, I said in the application that they wanted to let the kids run in their respective front yards, I think it was, back and forth and, um, I happen to, to know at least one of the, the, the landowners and they, they, you know, their kids, they're, they're constantly vigilant uh, with having to deal with Park Street traffic. And so I guess I, I don't see closing it down for a few hours in a year as a, as a major deal. Um, they've got to put up with the rest of the year.
Alright, I'd, I'd like to find a way to encourage a little easier ability to do something like this, but right there, um, I'm not in favor of understanding concerns and agreeing with staff. I think it would probably be wiser for backyard to private, you know, the way they come together right there. But I, I would like a, a way to make it a little easier to have a gathering like this or a recommendation. I know they want it right where their yard is, but I think they could go either way, have a street block, but I'm sure they want it right up their yard, as long as they want that specific section.
I guess I, I'm going to agree. I, I, I think we should really have a separate ordinance dealing with, um, block parties, you know, close block parties um, versus a special event, because when you say special event, I see it's open to everybody. And, uh, I think their intent is just to have the neighborhood get together and have some space to do it, so I'm kind of thrown um, into this. I don't have a problem with block parties or even a block party here. I'm concerned with it coming under a special event permit and then we decide if we're not going to force them to get insurance, then we're setting a precedent with something. The next, uh, special event, all the regulations that he has mentioned, I, 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 I think, uh, I, I think we need, my opinion is, I guess I'm not for this because of, of how we have it. I think we have to maybe try to find a, an ordinance that we can all live with and it makes more sense. I don't want to give a special event permit and then give a bunch of waivers on it. I just don't think that's a good thing to do. Okay, Andy?
Yeah, um, I would agree with Doug and Kevin, uh, that, I mean, let's give it to them. Uh, they're asking for five hours, eleven AM before the half. It's one block of Park Street, Main Street's right there. You know, that, I think this is kind of what makes Cross Plains special is that we can have these sorts of little family gathering events where we can block out the street, uh, because we, you know, we're not a big town, so. You know, it's kind of a cool thing. It brings community together and if they want to open up to the public or that's required with the ordinance, then just let them know that's the way it's going to be and who knows, maybe they'll meet some neighbors they've never met before. So I, I would vote in favor of this. I'll make a motion.
Okay, first can I let Bill go first?
So, um, I would, I would tend to agree with, with having, letting them have the block party, but they need to, they need to follow all the rules and guidances of a, of a special permit. And that's going to be costly for them, so. You know, and, you know, right now, I, I'm opt to, to not let them have it unless they have all the paperwork filled out for a special event, because that's what they're requesting, so. But I agree, I think they should have it, but I, I, I don't want to set a precedence either.
I just want to point out block parties are, would not be unique to Cross Plains. Madison had hundreds of them, but they have a special ordinance and there's special rules with it. They're not classified as a special event and they don't fall under the rules and regulations of that. So I think there's plenty of communities that we can get a copy of their ordinance and pass something like that. Alright, so now it's Kevin. You were going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, well, uh, eighteen hundred, uh, Park Street block party permit. Uh, provided the applicants meet all ordinance and application requirements and provided they give a secondary form of, uh, phone number in case they need to reopen the road in an emergency situation.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee.
Excuse me, here's your discussion, I'm sorry. Excuse me, here's your discussion, I'm sorry. Any discussion, okay? Well, okay.
So I just want to clarify something on Kevin. So you're saying that. Allow them to have it as long as they uh get all the uh regulations for the special permit to fill, correct?
Now, I'm fond of the the staff recommendation, the one that applicants meet all ordinance and application requirements, so. That's part of it, that's part of it.
Okay, I I just wanted to get a clear view of it.
Michael?
I'll say that I agree with everything I said. I think we need a special ordinance for these sorts of things. And that's honestly.
Alright, alright, Doug. Was anyone communicated with Mather, let them know with these couple items?
Yeah, he is on, he is on there and then I did reach out to him, the initial application uh to. Uh we did have questions in regards to uh Park Street being closed. Uh he did offer to uh exit in the application. That they would shut the streets uh and then second uh secondarily uh. Uh issue about uh regulating alcohol uh on on public versus private. Uh the other items we did not touch based on was assumed that that when they filed the application and signed the application. The application itself does have the requirement for insurance. On there uh insurance requirements here and then. Uh as far as it being a public event, uh the the disclaimer statement uh that wasn't made to.
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing I'm curious of is if, you know, we do the bulletin that's approved, if he's going to follow through and do the insurance, so. You know, I know that I've run into this in past events that I've done where we've done doing alternative. We're doing private yards or doing park or something else, so I I just was curious about that. But I'll see.
Can I ask, uh who is supplying the barricade?
So it's. What, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, who's, I I, you know, on special events that you usually get barricades rented from the village or something like.
Yeah, he's requesting the the village.
Oh, okay. That's not typically what people have in the garage.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you said barricade or fair.
Alright, any other discussion? Roll call both please.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Cattlebiter.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Motion carries. Alright, number four, discussion and possible action regarding a village face mask policy. I just want to get a little history of this. Prior to the county making a land mandate again. It was a request from staff, a staff member and a trustee to put this on prior to the mandate. Now, we've been putting this on, this is like the third or fourth time. What I would like us to do is come up with a motion that. We follow whatever it is, so we don't have to keep bringing this up every month on are we changing the mask on, mask off? So if we pick the CD CDC or health and whatever level they make it, that's what we follow, so it doesn't come up every month on that, so that's. While we all have to wear masks right now. The issue here is I'd like something where we don't have to keep bringing this up every time there's a change. So I have Judy. Go ahead.
I totally agree. Um so I do think if we found something, if we found the CDC, because it does seem to be the one that everybody's following, I would make the motion that we found the CDC rules.
Okay, can I just ask you, when you say CDC, if they say we strongly recommend people wear masks indoor, do we make that that's our policy?
Right, we say strongly. If they say it's mandatory, we say mandatory. If they say strongly to do.
Also, you were doing word for word then.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other people, Andy?
Yeah, I mean. I mean, we live in Dane County. Dane County has mandates. We have to wear masks. I say we should adhere to Dane County personally. I I also see your point of not having to come back to this. Uh however, had we not noted to repeal the mask mandate, the first place we wouldn't be here again as we are. And so I would just recommend that we. Create our own mandatory indoor mask mandate for the village cross planes. And then if Dane County rescinds that, we can rescind ours. It's not going to be a big headache to do that, you know, it's it's a simple mode of. So I I.
So you're, that's a little different than what Judy was saying. What you're saying is.
Yeah.
It's a mandate here until we remove it.
Right, so I I I disagree, however, I would be open to adhering to our motion here today to the Dane County uh Health Department. Not to the CDC.
That's why I'd be in favor of us following the Dane County Health Department recommendation versus trying to make our own indoor confusing table.
I just want to clarify throughout the motion and.
No, there isn't a motion because it wasn't second, so there's just discussion, right? We're just throwing ideas out there and trying to figure out where people are coming from.
So I I agree with with the CDC, well, with CDC, but I agree with with following the CDC guidelines because they're national. And they have, they have more tools at hand than Madison and Dane County Health does. Uh they're getting recommend, their Dane County Health is getting information from the CDC. Um I am I I'm in favor of following what the CDC says, because if they say mask mandate, then we do mask mandate. They say. Like Judy was saying, it's, you know, it's all on uh purpose and what they recommend, but.
Alright, Andy?
Yeah, I think the problem with the CDC is that they're looking at a national scale, whereas here in the state of Wisconsin. We're looking at local scales and where we need to have masks and don't have masks in urban settings or rural settings, and so I would just rather go with the county level. Because that's the needs of particular people that we're trying to protect here in in our community. So while the CDC might have more scientists and sound cooler, I just think that uh going based on like what our community needs are is probably the better way to go about it.
Alright, I'd like to hear from Kevin and Michael.
Dane County.
I would say Dane County, they they do tracking, they can see if case counts inside Dane County are going up, that's what they base their. Mask many on and restrictions rather than the national levels, just far too distant and and unapplicable to the area that where we live.
Okay. And go ahead, Bill.
I I just want to comment quickly. I'll have to double check because I don't see it anywhere in ordinance in regards uh how. Not the how. Uh jurisdiction over health policy in Dane County, whether or not I conflicts with with CDC. Uh for the village as a municipal Dane County, just want to double check that. So that that's just a caveat, caveat I think I just want to.
Right, I pull back. I personally think it's unlikely the CDC is ever going to do a uh mandate. I think it it's more on geographic areas where the hotspots are, but this blanket makes really no sense anymore. More so I, I don't think they'll come out with anything, and we still have to follow whatever Dane County says, so. But I just want to make sure the people that we're looking at, I have two things here. It sounds like majority of people want to use Dane County. So the two things are out there, do we do Dane County, what they call is what we have, or do we maintain. Our our own level, because that's what I'm hearing from Andy. Others, I'm hearing that it's whatever the Dane County says. So I've done.
I would prefer that we follow Dane County's guidance as our policy and our starting point, and unless there would be something crazy, we could take action on it. But as far as what I see, I don't know what's next, nonetheless do, but as far as what I'm seeing in our district, I would prefer just to follow Dane County's mandate first of all, Saturday.
Alright. Do I have somebody that would like to put that into motion?
I would make a motion that as far as the village face mask policy goes, that we're going to take our direction from Dane County Public Health.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'll say it. Yeah, a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call both please.
Trustee Cattlebiter.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
No.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Alright. Number five. Discussion and possible action regarding the street plan for creek crossing at St. Francis, excuse me. So you want to fill us in?
Yeah, let me get to that exhibit here.
Okay.
Alright, so as you can see on the the board here or the projector, uh this is the streetlight plan for uh creek crossing at St. Francis. Uh. Per ordinance, uh this is true goal, uh it's generally, or has in the past been done by the director of all facilities. Um at the last development, believe the village board have requested that this come to the village board review. Uh as you can see, the red dots indicate where the streetlights will be. Uh it has been reviewed by the director of facilities and I believe that uh he recommends a true goal at this point. So this is for the location, uh the the streetlight specs are per policy as adopted by the village board. Previous decision.
So this meets our policy then?
Right.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the streetlight plan for creek crossing at St. Francis. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same, so move. Discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three inspector agreement. Yeah, why don't you just walk us through it? Because I thought we approved these already, but.
So I believe we uh we uh first initially, the village first initially uh signed an agreement with Johnson inspections or building inspections, both on a. The residential on the commercial side in two thousand seventeen. Uh as we reviewed it, the contract, the agreement was good for two years, uh we did not reopen in twenty nineteen, but the services continue. Uh and so the document that you have for you is the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three agreement. Uh you note that there are changes in the uh building permit fees, primarily the cost per footage. Uh has got a um. The standard uh. Section fees for uh raising early start and or uh minor projects, most of the states. All the other language are just similar to uh the one that was approved previously.
Bill? I'll make a motion that we approve Johnson inspection LLC for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three building inspector agreement.
I'll second. Alright, I have a motion and a second discussion. My only question is, is it? Is it something we should go out and see if there's another bit out there that might be better? I I'm just, I'm throwing that out that when the agreement comes up, is it something we should look at or at least see if there's. Comparables or there could be some savings in that, I just throw that out, Judy?
Is there a lot of competition? I mean, you know.
Oh, I don't know about in this area. I think others may have more, more, a better understanding of what is available uh. But we would, I mean, as a reminder, here we do, we would have to look for someone both on the residence or the commercial side because we carry all inspections.
Same, it doesn't hurt to share.
The people's thoughts. That would be my best line.
I'm okay with, I'm okay. My personal opinion is I'm okay with uh current uh inspection services, we. We have a lot of homes coming up online here uh. And so to. Probably to RFP for the remainder of the year and go through the process and. And uh ensure that they are the right contractors and then changing those contractors listening at the stage. Uh especially for the commercial side, but take up a lot of work before.
And and correctly if I'm wrong, is this money in for the village itself, money in, money out?
The the village retains ten percent.
Ten percent, okay, so uh. That's really the part we'd be seeking is if we could get fifteen percent or some incremental number higher than ten percent, so I'm I'm fine with keeping Johnson.
Well, I kind of, I I understand your concept there. So I still think we should be taking care of the residents, and if we can find a place to do it for three cents a square foot versus six. While we may not get as much, the resident isn't paying as much, and I I do think there's some obligation that we should look out for. The citizens, because they're not able to go and pick whoever they want, it's who we direct. I don't know if these are fair. Costs for someone who's coming to town or not, I just don't know. But so I I think there's a a second part. I'm fine with going with it. But I would, I would think that before the twenty twenty three, maybe in twenty twenty two, we at least look at what else is out there and what is. The average and stuff, because it's not just for the money we bring in, it's also the cost of.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that there's quality of service as well as cost, so just make sure if we reassess this at some point or we're going to pull this two times.
Alright, so so that would mean the new contract would be for twenty twenty four would be, because this was a two-year contract, right? Yeah, okay, yeah, just putting it on our radar in terms of shopping at our own.
Alright, uh uh any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same, so move. Seven. Uh discussion and possible action to adopt an ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter eighty-three of the village. Cross planes code of ordinance regarding land division and subdivision. Bill, you want to kind of just?
Yeah, so basically what we've done here is updated uh ordinance and we'll see both copy of the red line and. Uh a clean copy of of uh. Uh actual actual code language to uh better represent uh the practices of today and the laws and statutes of today. Uh if you have any specific questions, uh do let me know. Don't feel like I need to go through the document, all the documents are pretty. But uh. Well, the main areas that we updated for include uh. Moving the language on the park and right open space plan over to the applies for impact fees. Uh we did make the adjustment from a hundred percent of the infiltration rate to ninety percent as that was a recurring waiver that the village board have. Subject or approved. In addition to that, we did change uh some language here uh regarding the the scheduling uh of. Of mask grading uh and uh. When we can do that, as if you if you remember the last two developments, we provided that waiver. Uh and the language in here reflects uh the same recommendations as may. Occurrences. Lastly, uh besides some some minor administrative findings, changing language from clerk to administrator, and therefore, uh we also changed uh. The uh removal of the word variance from the waiver of the variance implies some requirements on there's only. Uh and has certain implications in court, uh so we kept that as a waiver only. There is a question that was posed by our attorney, the waiver language uh states that it's three force of. The entire fine commission and of the entire village board. Uh he had posed the question of whether or not the board wanted to move that to uh of the the. the members that are present or go to third and I'll leave that up to you. Then we did update so that the subdivision ordinance would be more in line with the zoning code and areas that are affected with, where the design of plots, so changing law minimum requirement is their district and the zoning code. And then also changed in change language in regards to block lines, rain angles, curvatures, vision triangles to match the zoning. And I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
What's about your permission? What's that?
A seven zero.
Yes, my question. The one thing I wanted, one thing they wanted is that three quarters, currently it's three quarters of the full plan commission and board. My personal views, I think we should keep it that way. These are big things that when you do change of zoning, I think, because if you take that away, basically three numbers to make the call if they have only four showing up versus the required six, so.
You mean on the entirety of the planning commission and board combined or three quarters on each body?
Each one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because it'll go to plan first, so I just, I just think these are, you know, really important things that everybody. I think the stand, the bar should be high. So I, I personally like it the way it is that the whole board gets here to, to make the call versus.
I make motion to adopt the ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter 83.
Any other discussion? Michael?
I agree with Jay with keeping it three quarters. I just have a question in terms of that subdivision piece, when you said you adjusted it to keep it with the zoning codes, whereas the subdivision, the way that it says the minimum would be 900, 9,600 square feet, that's a, that's, that's regulating an SR4 lot size. Do we know of a history of why that was included in here? Versus like an SR5 would be a smaller lot size, whereas a subdivision ordinance is requiring an SR4.
Yeah, I don't know, to be honest, I don't know what the history of why they went with that in the subdivision ordinance. I know that there are some minimum requirements per state law, state statute that requires a minimum lot, I think, with a 50B. But then the village has authority to make it less.
Or to make them bigger.
Or, yeah, let's make bigger or smaller.
Right. I guess my question is, are we fine with setting this at a smaller lot sizes than what's required from the previous?
Yeah, if I can get in there, I think that's a great thing. I think it's kind of allow for residents to move in. They can afford a larger lot size and give us more options and as Bill just said, we can do bigger or smaller based on our, let's do it.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same. Thank you, that should help us cut some of the time coming through. All right. Presentation and discussion, village tax levy report. I believe Judd is, again, this is an information, this is not to be critical or anything, it's just to give you information on where we're at.
Judd, go ahead and you can unmute yourself. Let me know when you want me to flip the page.
Okay, so we mainly compared the, compared the communities that neighbor us, just as a comparison to basically the people that live around us. Next page. Yeah, keep going past the sources, next page. So we ended up originally started using assessed market value and then ended on this fair market value comparison to kind of get an apples to apples comparison on what each community is paying. Next page. Just for background, this was probably six months ago. Just an idea that, you know, the median housing market price is going up. So obviously what we can tax on an individual house continues to go up and probably will be until the market cools. And that $315 or $315,000 range will come into play when we look at some of the numbers, because it's broken down per 100,000. Next one. Next page, Bill. So the first thing to look at is the mill rate comparison. You'll see that Black Earth, obviously the highest mill rate comparison, mill rate, mill rate. There's just a couple of different graphs there to show it. Next page. So it's just a breakdown of the numbers and how the percentages work. You can look at those numbers as you wish. Next page. So the breakdown in your tax bill, there's basically four different pieces that combine into the mill rate. You have the county, the village, the school district and M A T C. Obviously, as a village, we only control what we tax that way. Everything else is kind of dictated towards us, so that's what this report is really focusing on. But it will show you some of the differences in how that tax number can move or the mill rate moves depending on each community. Next page. So based on assessed value, Home and Cross Plains at $300,000 would pay about $6,500 in taxes. 2,500 of it goes to the village. That's on assessed value. Next page. So the graph here is just showing the numbers from each community in comparison. So you can see that, next page. So here's where the numbers really make a difference. The, the county and M A T C in virtually all the communities that we compared were, were pretty darn close. Where you saw the biggest difference was going to be in the, what we paid to the municipality or the school district. Next page. So these numbers are on assessed value and again, this is where you have to factor in the average assessment ratio for each community and then what the value of the house is and how long they've been assessed and that gets complicated. So that's where we, the next page, Bill, will show this fair market value comparison. It must be after that. Yeah, that's where it is. So based on fair market value comparison, you can see the percentages there that were paying significantly higher than the neighboring communities. Bill, we go up to that previous slide. So the previous slide, this slide here, what it's showing you is the graph on the left is just the cross plains mill rate. And you can see that over the last 10 years, there's a steady, steady incline in that. When you look at the other three pieces of our mill rate being the county, the school district and M A T C, you see a steep drop in 2018 and then a rebound. But you can see where those tax rates went down and about the time they were going down and the other three pieces of our pie, the village continued to go up. Keep going. So we did this, I mean, the takeaway here is you can look at the percentages and what we're paying in comparison. Now, these percentages are just what we paid to the local municipality versus our neighbors. Next page. So in total tax rates, we ranked 14th out of 28 villages. There's different numbers, you can read through all those if you want. We had a higher tax rate than four out of eight cities. Next page. So the big thing here is, you know, when I personally started looking at this and we put it together in the committee, you know, the one thing that I had heard was that, you know, the larger cities or larger communities would probably have lower taxes because they have, particularly if you look at Middleton, where you've got more village or more residents and more businesses to help spread out the tax burden. And the one thing that was found was that, you know, population was not a predictor of tax rates. Next page. So we compared Brooklyn and the reason that we compared Brooklyn, it was the, the worst as far as taxes. And this is where you can see there's a difference in, you know, those two areas, either the schools or the local municipality. And while they pay more in taxes, they pay about less than half of what we do, 55% less to their local municipality. And that's made up in what they pay to the school district. So, next page. So we compared tax rates with four out of 19 villages in one city. And it's, the village is charging disproportionately higher tax rates than the nearby communities. What it comes down to is there can be many reasons for this and that's something that needs to be looked at further.
Good. Thank you, Judd. So I'll take it from here. So what we did is once we recognized, as Judd said, we wanted to look into it. So the first thing we did is we looked at expenses, but we wanted to compare somebody. Now, we use Middleton and the reason for using Middleton, even though, you know, one's a larger city than us. But they have the same school district tax, the same county tax and the same M A T C. So those things that Judd talked about that add in were all the same. So we were able to quantify the Middleton and the village. So when you look at this, you can kind of see the breakdown of it. And not any one of these things you should take and run with it. It's a combination of everything, of looking at this. And there's positives and negatives when you look at the expense comparison chart. I don't think it surprises anybody because we've talked about it and it's been a priority is if you look at our debt service, the percent of taxes going to debt service for us is 26% for Middleton is 23%. If you look at almost every other category, Middleton is a higher percent than what we are. Now, the good news is, if you really want to see this, you look at parks and recs. That is, when you look at just straight expense, it shows that we're at 13% and Middleton's at nine. But once you, because it's, they're somewhat of a enterprise agency where they bring in revenues to offset expenses, you look at that and it brings it down to almost even. So if you look at that, we're recouping almost three times as much of our costs in Parks and Rec than the city of Middleton, which is a very positive. But, you know, you go up there, you know, the one thing that sticks out is something we should keep in mind is the, the debt service. And I know we've been working on that, but that's what this kind of shows. The next chart, it's really, I, I'm having hard to read it with, we wanted to look at, were there revenues that Middleton is getting that we don't? That makes a big difference, even though it says expenses on the first one, if you can see the expenses comparison too are more revenue. Obviously Middleton has hotels, so they have extra revenue there. They write grants, they have three kids, so they have some availability to have more funds that way. So there really wasn't a whole lot to go on the revenue side. I think we're doing the best we can. We always will continue to try. So then the last one here is a statement of assessment. This is done by the IRS. And this looks at what, what type of real estate is paying the property tax? And I think what jumps out right away is our residential pays for 79%. They make up 79% of our assessed value. Why? If you look at Middleton, it's at 57%. Then you go to commercial, we're at 19% versus their 40%. And then the other one is manufacturing. Actually, we're, we're, you know, 1%, they're 3% and all these other categories are less than 1% on that. So it, it does show that a lot of the burden in cross plains or levy is tied to residential. And obviously, the only way to flip that number is, or reduce it is by bringing in commercial, manufacturing, that type of thing, which I think, again, that is a priority for us and we're working on that. So I think what this is meant to do is just give some background on where we sit. And hopefully, this is not something that is a short-term solution. You know, no one is suggesting we make major cuts, but what we do is we keep this information. And when we move forward, we try to do what we can to better our position when it comes to tax levy. I think it's important, the finance group thought it was important to have this information. So as policymakers, we have some understanding on where we're at versus just people saying we have high taxes or whatever, whatever. So I think hopefully, again, this is something that we can draw back and hopefully we'll use some of this to make some decision, you know, influence some of our decision making. So we'll open it up, Bill.
So I think, I think there's a couple of things missing from this report. I think you guys did a really good job, but I think there's more, more focus that can be done. One of the things, for examples, on page 201, where you have the two graphs between the cross plains mill rate and the mill rate minus the M A T C and Bing County and, and schools, is what I would like to see is compare that graph on the left to the cost of living for that year, because if the cost of living's increased or decreased. And I think that would give us a more accurate information on what we're doing on the, on the tax rolls as far as are we, are we spending more than what the current rate of adjustment is or inflation is, or spending less, are we even with it? So there's a lot of information, again, there's some really good information here, very valuable information. But I think there's more information that could be had to make maybe better conclusions out of some of this information.
Okay.
Andy? Yeah, I think I would like to thank the finance committee for doing this work as well. The report is very thorough and, and very informational. I, I again would kind of bring up some of the sentiments I brought in the last conversation about you what you pay for. And while yes, we need to, you know, relieve the tax burden on residences and get more development to take that burden. I think it comes at a cost and we have to make sure we do it in a sustainable way. Because I would really hate to see Black Earth Creek turn into Pheasant Branch Creek.
Any other comments on that?
All right, can I just?
Michael?
Sorry. Can I just ask you to clarify what that means? I'm not familiar with that analogy.
Yeah, Pheasant Branch Conservancy is in Middleton and it's a creek that used to have a lot of trout and wildlife and awesome fishing opportunities. It has been inundated with the development of Middleton surrounded and is no longer a clean stream.
All right, don't need any action on this?
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, well, I mean, just looking at it and like with what Bill was talking about, more information in terms of the charts. I mean, they're, they're great. I mean, they're very well researched, but like in 2018, like I know that that was the year that we had an assessment, which is why the mill rate went down. A lot of houses in the village became valued higher. But the mill rate actually went down, but you aren't across comparing it to how much, what, what actually was the budget that year. Like, you know, they're just different levels and, you know, you could look at a million data points. But I'm just saying that that's why the mill rate went down that year, because that was the assessed year. So assessments went up. Budget went up a little bit, but the mill rate actually went down in the village.
It would see that, you're right with the mill rate, but I think with Bill, what we could have done easy enough is in those years, show what percent of increase in budget was.
Absolutely.
And the increase in cost of living. Yeah, and I know, I know some of those years it was 8.66 and 9%, so I'm, I'm sure we were over what the rate of inflation. But yeah, we could have, we could do that and that would explain a little bit more of it. The big drop, when you go to the right on that, that's when the feds came in and gave huge amounts of money to the school district. So the school district, I know my side of the school district went down like two hundred and twenty-five bucks. So that's why it dropped so much, because this is a com- combination, if remember, there was that in. Lots of money to the school.
Wasn't there also a big thing with M A T C in Dane County and and?
I think it's somewhere around the state ended up not taking money out of it.
Right, and so that helped. So I think that's that was, that's a big dip in eighteen.
Yeah, yeah. Any other? All right, well, what what I think Bill does, I think what I'll do is bring that back to the committee and maybe we can. Shore up some of this stuff that would make it a little bit better for a historical perspective. And then that would give you kind of an idea. And again, we do not want people to be on the defensive. This is, it's educational, it is what it is. And we just, as part of discussions, this is kind of where, where, where we've done and where we're. At related to other cities or villages. All right, anything else? All right, so we are going to. Number nine. Now, what I'm gonna do is we're gonna go through each letter and approve each one individually. And I would like it in a positive, motion to be in a positive way. So if we vote no, then people know that we don't want to spend the money. If we vote yes, we want to. So let's keep it in the positive. So it's, everybody knows how we're voting.
So we can't say we're positive, we don't want to spend.
Yeah, no. I want a yes vote to be yes and a no vote to be no. So if that's, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we are at number nine. Discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-two capital improvement project. We will start with A.
I will make a motion to accept A, spend twenty-two thousand, do you want me to say the fifty thousand?
No, it would, it would be the twenty-seven thousand. The don- well, just, why don't we just say the the Xander Park Pavilion? All second. Okay. I I have a motion and a second discussion. I just want to throw out that we had a resolution and a M O U on this. So I'm thinking we're already committed.
Yep, I guess, I just have a question as to what, what we're actually spending, is just a clarification.
We're spending twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, because we already have spent twenty-three thousand on this project.
Oh, and we have a.
And we agreed to fifty thousand.
A match.
Yeah.
So that's why the donations say fifty thousand.
Yes.
I was just wondering what that's meant.
So this reflects what we still.
Over with the donation.
All right.
And the final plan is going to be back to four adventures.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think there, right now, we're at the point of getting a rendering. And then it will be turned over to the lines for the fundraising.
Rendering and cost.
Oh, that's right, thank you. All right, so let's do roll call on all of these, just to keep it.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yep.
Trusty Calvater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
President Langford.
Yes. Number B is the Bear Park Pickleball slash Basketball Court Resurface Parks and Recreation.
I'm making a motion to approve nine B Bear Park Pickleball Basketball Court Resurface Parks.
Second. All right, we're in discussion. All right, Julie. No, no, we haven't budgeted, that's what we're doing. Well, yeah, because we had extra documents ahead, so that was just a formality to get it in. Bill?
So, um, I agree with this, but I don't think this is big enough. Pickleball is becoming such a rage around the country. And specifically in this area that you can't even get an open pickleball court. It's in in Dane County, it's super difficult. So, um, so I am agreeing with this. But I just don't know if it's big enough.
All right, okay, myself and then Julie.
And I don't understand, well, when you say big enough, you mean the space isn't big enough?
I know, I know, of course. Sorry. I I guess here's the thing, I'm all for this, but not this year. I think we have so many things on our plate right now. We still haven't got the equipment in the Peridian Development. We've got two more developments that Parks and Rec passed. They have their, there's a lot of work in the conservancies to be done. We're trying to get Brewery Road done. We have the well. I think there's just too much and I think we're starting to pile off things and I'm worried we're going to lose things. And I just would like to get us more, a little bit more stable. And just get the things done that we need. If you look, we're not gonna do road resurfacing this year. There's a lot of things out there that are playing, where there's shortages, prices are really high. I don't think this is a high enough priority, and I'll pay those extra costs that I think we're gonna pay. I'd rather put this off to next year and let things settle down. There is a shortage of everything. So I think the only things we should be working on are things that are absolutely necessary. At this time. So that, I I'm not in favor of it for next year.
Very clear, but you're not in favor of pickleball courts next year or expanding the pickleball courts?
Well, we, we don't have pickleball courts, to my understanding. So I'm opposed to this project in, in general for this for twenty twenty-two. I'm looking to move it to twenty twenty-three. I I just think there's, the village has got too many things on your plate right now that staff has to work on. And I'm concerned about all the shortages. We saw what's happening with the bleachers, on how much more that's costing. Do we need these courts now to pay that premium? That's where I'm coming from. Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, yeah, let's absolutely do this. I mean, number one, COVID has pushed more people outside than before. And, you know, one way to alleviate some of the tax burden that we just referenced in the last presentation would be to get people coming into the village to spend more money. And if there indeed is a shortage of pickleball courts in Dane County, why not make them here, you know? If if it's gonna happen now or in a year, I I'd say let's just, let's go ahead and pull this one. So that's my, that's my take on that.
All right, Michael?
My question is, in terms of like, you know, things being scarce, when you priced this at one ten, is this a guess? Or did you get a quote or how did you price that?
I based all of my capital improvement costs off of bids from the city of Madison and other.
We have to come up so that.
So I based that directly off of bids that were given to the city of Madison, through their big documents and also in other communities in Dane County. Some Prairie, DeForest, just the communities that recently put in courts, so.
Done something similar to this.
Right.
Well, I understand your hesitation, Jay. I guess the question is, do you have a lot of things going on, Mike? I mean, this is the only park, quote unquote, improvement aside from the Xander.
Correct. There are a lot of park improvements though that you'll see down the road as well. So I don't know if there's ever a good time, right? Like, there's, there's never sense to be a, we have a short window all the time for construction projects anyways. And we have playground improvements and or park improvements that will happen, like I said, in the next five years, so. I do echo what Bill had brought up in regards to the size of them or how many. A lot of the courts that you'll see in Madison or even some Prairie are a minimum of six. The problem or what we have is space issues within that area. And the other thing that we don't have in Bear Park and or the Beaker Site is parking in any other area. So, you know, to add to the costs for parking and all those different parts for the Beaker Site and or other sites and the Parks Plan. Isn't currently done, so that's why I chose this, this space. The courts. This is also, this is also an eyesore. It's been an eyesore since I've been here. But at least it used to get use with World's Fair and some of the basketball would be played there every once in a while. Now basketball tends to be played quite often down at Glacial Valley Park, where we have a lot of different age groups together. So this can also be an opportunity to space that out as we look into the basketball portion of this as well, so.
All right, Julie?
I should know this, but I don't. Is there a skateboard over there or will this affect that?
There is a skateboard park that would be directly behind that. There are a couple of pickleball and tennis courts and other communities that are built just like this one would be. Right, yeah, there, there would be wind screens on the back or on each side of the fenced-in area. Which would kind of buffer that skateboard park and and pickleball court area. Obviously, there'd still be noise and things of that sort, but they, it is fenced currently in that location. It gets used a lot, it gets used a lot. This does take into effect the fact that we wouldn't be able to expand the skateboard park in that area. For all of you that weren't on the board years ago and had all got changed around, the skateboard park was supposed to be down where the tennis court is currently. But the specs weren't done correctly for the, for the concrete at the time, so we moved everything around. So far, it's worked out well, but it doesn't allow us to have pickleball anywhere within Bear Park. The current sport court that we have for our tennis court doesn't work the best for pickleballs. They are like a plastic, harder plastic ball, but they don't bounce as well on that sport court surface. Yeah, kind of a wiffle ball, but a little heavier, yeah. We do currently have one pickleball court that's out here that Frank Durham was actually able to put together for us. Gets quite a bit of use during the summer. A lot of the swim team kids are kids that do swim lessons. And I know I had a couple even this year where they asked him to throw it out for them at nights and on weekends. So I know that the, the number of people wanting pickleball courts is definitely there. And what I've found from a lot of people is that they travel. They're willing to travel if the court's open, that's for sure, so.
And the problem with this pickleball court here is that there's no safety netting, because of the balls. It's like tennis, but it's a smaller court. And the balls go, they go in the street, they go all over the place, it's without any netting around.
Yeah.
Could we do it, we get it next year, can we do a part of our department and do like a, and that accessible prices in charge? Or like, like a, a league?
Absolutely.
Middle to this league.
Yeah, absolutely, I think.
They can make the money.
Right. Agree. I think the other side of it is that, you know, the patient, little different, but the school district as well could use it during their fire classes and other things too. So, but yes, I know Frank has talked about doing open, he's done a few of them actually here to show people kind of what pickleball is. The Light Foundation as well have put together some programming for that within the school, so we were inside, because we didn't have a court outside. But there were people that attended those as well, so.
Then one other quick thing.
Go ahead, Michael.
You were talking about putting in the ADA. Path there or ability for people to get up to the courts. Is, would that interfere with any of those trees that are located there or were you able to?
No, it actually would be just resurfacing the current ADA path that's there, as it's very, they're beat up, there's a lot of weeds coming up.
Oh, there already is something up there. Oh, so it's, there will be, okay, I just saw on the map that you're attending. Okay, thank you. I, I mean, I, I understand your hesitation, Jay, why you said that, just to push this off and to push money off. But I really think this would be an improvement to our community. That area over there has been kind of unused and underutilized for a very long time. And it sounds like, I mean, we even got a letter from fifteen people lobbying for it, which you don't see too often.
Any other question? Roll call, please.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
No.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Calvater.
No.
Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
President Langford.
No. All right, we're at C, half-ton pickup truck replacement, Parks and Recreation. Mike, Mike, come on up. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve discussion. I have one question for you. You're moving from a small pickup Dodge Dakota to a full-size truck. A half-ton, and I see for carrying equipment and tools. The question I have for you, it seems like a lot of places, including the private sector, is moving to trailers. So I'm wondering why you wouldn't want to buy an enclosed trailer that you can haul all your equipment, store the stuff. It lasts a lot longer than a vehicle. And you can then also leave it somewhere so you don't have to unload and load your truck all the time. And you can probably stay at a, a smaller truck. I just know a lot of places in the police department, we moved away from trucks and went to enclosed trailers.
Yeah, I'd love for you to add that to it, actually, if you'd like, that'd be great.
Placing it small with a, a trail.
I, I think, I think that's possible. The, the other, the only problem I think we've run into or continue to run into is with the snowplowing side of it. I'm not so sure if a, a, a smaller truck will allow such usage. And I only bring that.
With it now?
No, and that's what I'm saying. That's, that's why I decided. So I looked at different options as well for this opportunity. I actually wanted to go with the U T V instead. Dane and I both around the same age within that. But once we were getting to the point of specking it out and it was as much as a truck. It was a little bit less, but there was a little bit less we could do with it as well. So I decided, we decided together, more or less, that this is probably the best option, as he's not gonna take the U T V. All around the village, he'd only be taking that to different areas that he, he knew he'd have trouble getting to. But the U T V and the pickup truck were real close in cost. For what we need, what we needed for. We currently now plow once the public facilities crew is done. And obviously with the current snowfall and things that we have, they're going through the night, you know, waiting to come in in the morning. To work to use one of the other trucks that we, we could use to plow Northwest Dane Senior Services, the paths if we need to. The parking lots here at the pool and up at, down at Raspberry Park, we've done as well. But as we've expanded to include more eight to ten-foot wide paths, the trucks tend to work best to follow those, so.
I guess I'm just curious why Public Works want to do all the power. I'm not su- I guess I'm not sure why. Why do we have Parks do so? Why not?
Well, Parks does parks.
Well, I, I'm hearing that now, I didn't know that. I just saw that Public Works did all the power. I'm just wondering why, wouldn't that be more efficient or?
It's not that they don't. There are times that they have taken that on, different paths for sure, they've taken on and done. But obviously, they're all, I mean, they have a lot, a number of streets and other parking lot areas to take care of for themselves, the fire station.
Go ahead, Jared.
We're running into a problem. We need to get the store to move it, like for instance, in Northwest Dane and off the trails. Before people are out there walking and packing it down. And that's a low priority for P F. Streets has to come first. So if Parks had a unit to use. They come in or Mike or whoever and start that plowing at. Six o'clock in the morning, so it's done before the, the traffic gets on. P F just simply doesn't have time to get there that early.
And full-size pickup is not too big for trails?
Yeah.
No, that's what we're using.
Like, what trails? Like, so the.
Like what trails, like so the path that goes out to Evergreen Parkway, past Glacier Creek Middle School. On the path, the ten-foot wide path going through Xander Park. And the path that'll be out there at. Scenic Ridge, Scenic Valley. And that'll be a new path out at Creek Side Crossing as well.
So full-size truck, you go on that?
Yeah, that's why it's great.
On the boardwalk?
Not the boardwalk, so the boardwalk we use with either the brush or or the bench track or the simplicity currently. To to get the snow. Correct, correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty.
I I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up, but the Sustainability Committee has talked a lot about electric vehicles, I'm just wondering if an electric vehicle is even an option in this case.
I don't know of any electric vehicles that plow. I think for the other purposes, it'd be awesome to have something like that, I think I have a Polaris Gem in there for next year. And just keep pushing it back a little bit for utility use along with, you know, the utility department to check meters and then for our our rec staff, but. I don't know about plowing and the battery life and all those things. Check into it more, like. The other thing about the trucks, the size, not so much, I'm not so sure that there's a real big difference in cost right now. I know I ran into that when I looked at it for my truck to go with a Dakota. Like Dakota, I think the Chevy, one of the Chevy pickups, and it was like very close to the same price.
So I just bought a brand new Polo for thirty-three thousand versus forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
But right now you can't get it, it was, you know.
Yeah.
They had zero.
Right.
All right. Any other questions or discussion, Michael?
I guess. You know, this is like you say for parks, but in the event of a major snowstorm, this vehicle would be used to plow streets as well, it's going to be. Dual use and what needs to happen or no?
Most of the time it wouldn't, I mean, Jerry can probably speak on this, but usually the guys have specific trucks they use now. I've been into plow and used Jerry's truck before on streets. Dane's been in as well and plowed and used a truck that's vacant at the time, we just don't have that vacant truck anymore, which is where we ran into those issues. And I mean, it could be used, I think, in a time where we haven't. A storm, a large storm. Dane definitely works within and so do I within public facilities from time to time, so.
What about putting a plow on your truck?
Could be done as well, the problem. We didn't spec it that way to begin with, I don't know what the change in cost would be, but it is something.
I don't believe the blue dogs that Mike drives has a snowball truck package on it, so it's really not going to hold up.
But you're not still following bigger streets, you're still following trains.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, so unless you're getting, you know, put in snow.
Until you plow, Bill, I I think you really should rethink where you're going with the statement, because plowing even. The path along Evergreen Parkway. If the wind blows, there could be a foot and a half of snow there, and once the snow is moved by the wind. It lands there and freezes, it's hard as a rock. The three-quarter ton that I drive that has plow that can also be a B option. There have, just this past where there are a couple of times where I had trouble getting through that. So when you work the truck that hard. The motor's probably not going to give you problems, but the transmission will. Doesn't have the proper cooling.
Right, I am handing it myself. Yeah, I mean, it's cross plans, guys, we're gonna, we're gonna grow, we're gonna have more outdoor facilities through parks and rags that we need to maintain, let's like just do it to the right. I I just would strongly encourage us to just go ahead and pull the trigger on this one as well.
Okay, I think we're trying to do it right, so my next question is, I see the trucks forty-eight thousand, but I don't see anything for the plow. Now, to do it right, buy a truck, you need a plow, so.
It should be in there in the document, I I broke it out, so it's thirty-eight, it's for the truck, if I remember right.
Yeah, it's broken out in one of the packets I saw.
So you're saying, okay.
So like I was saying, you got a thirty-three thousand dollar smaller truck, and I'm saying, oh, it's thirty-eight, so.
All right, any others?
No, I'm fine with it, it's just, I don't know, just what I was talking about, just. Cross-usage and optimizing trucks, so that, I mean, like if your truck was equipped, I mean, I'm not like. Saying anything, but the one that you drive on a snowball, like it's, you could come in and drive that and could have came in and used that to plow the paths and the. And the parking lots that you're talking about, right, I mean, these are things that we should be conscious of moving forward, so that's much more versatility in the equipment.
hindsight's always twenty-twenty.
Absolutely, I understand that, but looking forwards, these are just things.
I agree with you on that.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Calabater.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee enthusiasts.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, number D, body worn cameras, police department.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion in a second, we're open for discussion, chief.
Well, as you guys know, we've been working on this project for about a year now, and it's been vetted all over, we've. Encouraged the public to come, we've encouraged all of you to come, some of you. Showing up and giving us some some run for our money to look into this and and do a good job and thorough job. I think the product that you have in front of you is about as thorough, this has been a product, I've worked on a lot of projects, and this is probably one of the. Projects where we were, where I was really thorough in it, so I don't see anything that that. Would hurt us, and it's not very. It's not very costly, I did have to adjust it, I I, when I originally submitted it, I just submitted the cost of the cameras. But there will, in order to make them work with our squad cars, there is an added cost, it was eleven hundred dollars. And then I do need a couple hundred dollars just to train my staff, I continually forget that I'm the only one that's been using body cams for. Nearly two decades, and so the staff, they they don't know how those things work, and I'd hate to have them. Carry those without fully understanding their capabilities and and their limitations, so.
Well, I'll just mention that the Public Safety Committee supports.
Okay, can I, can I just want to throw something out there? We've already approved the server, and we already have money for the software for this year. I would recommend that we take this money and actually buy the cameras this year, I don't think it makes any sense. They have the server and the software ready to use, and we don't. With the contingency that the board passes the use of body cameras. So that would be what I think we should be doing with with this one.
Can you clarify that quickly?
Okay, right now, the the committee is recommending, it has not come to the board yet. It was, it was referred back as there needed to be some work on policy, so the. It has not come to the board to approve. We need a new server, so that's part of it, he was able to, in his tech budget, come up with the software. Requirement to do redaction for open record, so he has that, so we're going to have that in place this year, which. Is great, my feeling is if the board approves the use of cameras, we should just go ahead and spend the seven thousand dollars. And there's a number of funds that we can use at and get the program going, I I don't like. Doing something like this and not being able to use them for four to five months, that to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so I am actually for. Proposal that we move this up to this year.
The reason, you know, whether you decided to go with this program or not, I think that the writing's on the wall, at some point. Everybody's going to be required, there's, I'm going to be looking at grant funding, hopefully to recoup some of this money and some of the other money. They haven't come up with an actual budget to do body cams, but I think as time progresses, it's just going to be required of us. So I, so I thought, why not spend the money to prepare that system? When that happens, I was just kind of forward-thinking, as far as this goes, you know, whether we wait now or or do it right away. As a budget adjustment for two thousand twenty-one, I'm all for it, I think this program is actually a dated program and. I mean, they have body cams now for tasers and for, I mean, it it's it's gone pretty rampant, so. I I will go with anything, I just, I just know that that what I'm presenting here is is about as clean as it's going to get.
Right, I just don't want us to get into the discussion of body cameras now, so I wanted to separate that, that that will be coming up.
So you're trying to separate the policy talk from deciding the purchase.
Right, see, I'm going to my head, it's hard for me to approve spending something that has not been approved by the board. Right, I mean, I don't know if that makes a lot of sense, so what I'm saying is. Make it contingency that if when if we pass it, we go up and buy it and start the program right when we pass it. Instead of waiting till twenty twenty-two. Because it's a small dollar. Well, no, no, what we'll do is vote this down, and then we'll have another motion to make a budget adjustment for the twenty twenty-one.
Or we could just vote in support of it, too.
Doesn't matter to me, I would be happy to go with the motion.
Okay, what are we, what what do you want amended to?
I would I would amend it to add the piece. About the board supporting it.
Yeah, he's doing a separate amendment, so that is second there. So when we vote for this, it replaces the language in the original motion, then we vote on that. Everybody understand what we're doing, so the motion is to approve this. Once we approve it at the board level and to spend the money in twenty twenty-one. All right, Calvin.
I just have a question, this is the twenty twenty-one budget adjustment, correct?
It will be correct.
That's not on our.
It doesn't, that doesn't matter, yeah. It's capital and it's on your body camera, it doesn't dictate what you have to say.
Okay.
Yeah, because it'll be coming back. All right.
So I I just want to make sure this is clear, that we're going to have two votes for this.
Yeah.
The first one will be on the amended motion.
The language it, yes.
On the amended motion, and then the second one will be once we decide yay or nay on that amended motion. Whether to bring this up in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, then we still have the twenty twenty-two. Which will change the language if we pass it.
Correct. If we pass the first one, it changes the language. If we pass the second one, the language changes on the first.
Correct.
Yes.
If we don't, then language stays the same.
Correct, that is correct.
All right, and and just clarify, and this is not meant with any disrespect. The Public Safety Committee has considered body cameras already, is that correct?
Yes.
And they have supported that?
Yes.
It just hasn't made it to the board level yet.
Correct.
The body camera policy hasn't made it to the.
Right, theoretically could have been before this discussion.
No.
No.
I mean, I mean. I guess, yes, when was your meeting, Tuesday or something?
Just recent, okay, I'm just trying to just wrap my mind around where we are, okay, 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 sorry.
Nope, you don't have to apologize, all right, so we're on the amended motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, okay, now we're at the original. Motion with the change in language, roll call, please.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Calabater.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee enthusiasts.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes, alrighty. Now we're at E, replacement of portable radios, police department. Make a motion to approve. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the replacement of portable radios discussion, chief, you want to just give a quick summary?
Our radio started to have a, when I first got it, the radios were already having some issues, so from time to time, we'd have some issues. It then became clear that we were having some significant issues at certain locations. Where the communication wasn't very good, so I had all the radios taken into the radio shop to be upgraded to the. Farthest that they can go, I was then informed that those radios were fourteen years old, there are no parts for it, there are, they're they're just not. They're, they were end of life probably, you know, eight years ago, but they're still working, they're just, there's some. Functionality that that is not good, we're, there's some, we have some pretty good dead spots. So then I went out and 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 received some, a quote from Baycom. And that is the cost for the radios, before we had actual seven radios. So I eliminated one, one was just an extra radio, just in case one went down, I didn't, I didn't see the need to just have one sitting around collecting dust. So that is just six radios to equip six officers.
So. Can you, I'm sorry, are we talking? Vehicle radios, we're talking handhelds, or we're talking the office radio?
Portable radios, so the ones we carry on.
So the, so the ones in the vehicles are fine?
Yeah, those were replaced not too long ago.
And the base is fine?
Base is fine.
Okay, so just the portables?
Yep, portables, right now, if we, if one of our portables breaks, there's no way to, there's nowhere to repair it, we'd have to. Buy it, buy one and and, you know, just try to repair it that way, so.
All right, Michael.
I'm all in favor of this, obviously, these are all, I see you're going to try to get grant funding to do this, I think at one time, QuickTrip paid for some radios for us. That might be worth looking into again.
All right. Any others?
Yeah, exactly what locations at what times do these radios not work?
Spotty. They work right by your house, so.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee enthusiasts.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yep.
Trustee Calabater.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
So I, just so I'm clear, I was a little confused on the motion for the body cams, that will come to full village board next month?
Yes, we can put on, here's where you're at, chief.
Okay.
If the board approves the use of body cameras, you have all the money you need to get the program up and running, assuming it's approved.
This year?
Yes, this year, that's basically in a nutshell.
Okay, makes sense.
Thank you, yeah, all right, Al, replacement of the two thousand one Ford Out five fifty. Jared?
This is a one ton or slightly over one-ton rated dump truck, snowball. Critical piece of equipment. Probably by the time we get the new truck, it will be full-blown Fred Flintstone bricks. Of floorboards.
All right, do I, do I have a motion, I have a motion to replace the two thousand one Ford. I have a second.
A second then.
All right, discussion. Questions for Derek? And then Judy and then Cap.
Do we have an ability to take the Dakota and this pickup to auction or something, do we get somebody back there to trade it?
Yes, they'll be sold more than likely. Historically, I asked the dealer that we buy as a new vehicle from about a trade-in. And nine out of ten times, they'll say just. And nine out of ten times, they'll say, just take it for an auction. So we use, uh, the Scotts of Surplus up in Illinois.
Sounds good, thank you.
Hey, Judy and then Kevin.
Have you, um, as far as picking the number of the hundred thousand, have you done like a cost breakdown or like?
The number is based off a detailed one that I put together last year for this truck. In the five-year plan. For chassis, dump box, snowball. And salter. And, uh. Chassis is the largest item. I called, actually, I called up to Kaiser and, uh. Sock, the Dodge dealer, that's who I got the original numbers from. He couldn't give me a firm number on what the chassis increase would be. So I went a little bit conservative. Hopefully, I'm over. On the combined unit, but. I guess we'll see when I actually get hard numbers.
All right, Kevin? Yeah, that was one of my questions. Second one was priority, uh, three. Uh, Fred Flintstone, I think I put it in, it seemed like a low priority. If it's that bad. It was just not an update.
It's just an update. It got a lot worse this last winter.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call both, please.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Calvater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
All right, G, annual street resurfacing.
A motion to approve the annual street resurfacing.
Same.
All right, Jerry, go ahead.
Um. Yeah, this is, uh. Our annual program, uh, we have substantially more money planned for. Or at least right now, planned for twenty twenty-two than we've had in recent years, um. Was originally planning on diving into Park Street, um. This coming year, but. Uh, due to a series of unfortunate events this summer, uh, we're. It's highly unlikely we're gonna be able to do our program this year. I'm still negotiating with a couple of, or contractors to see if we could pull it off. But, uh. We gotta see, um, what is the exact amount in for this year, or for twenty twenty-two, like four hundred and some? Yeah, my bet is we will probably not do that much work. Um, we're gonna have hopefully some new staff coming on, so. Uh, we won't be. We won't have the experienced staff to, to do the work. We're also probably still gonna be playing some catch-up from being short-staffed this fall, so. I think we're gonna probably try and shoot for. The streets that were originally planned for this year. And some additional short streets, uh. I think realistically, we're more, looking at more like spending about two hundred thousand than that four hundred. That four hundred number was a carryover from. The original C I P a year ago, so. The other thing we do have to pay for out of there will be, uh, probably some of the preliminary engineering on, uh, Brewery Road. For twenty twenty-three. I think that's when it's.
Yes, yeah. So starting in twenty twenty-two, then part twenty-two with that, uh, construction.
But I thought that was all coming out of other, uh, funding sources, sewer water and.
Ultimately, it will, but we still have, we have to pay the bill up until we collect all of our resources.
And we'll, we'll have the funds available for that.
Yeah.
To take it out of, uh.
Okay.
All right.
Well, there might be a portion that is. Of the engineering that goes towards streets that would have to.
Yeah. All right, any questions? Michael.
Okay, so. You still have a holdover of this year's surfacing that isn't spent, right? Because you're possibly not gonna do street surfacing this year?
We haven't borrowed, so.
We haven't borrowed.
So there's not the money.
There's.
If he decides to do it, we get twelve.
Oh, we, we would.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that that capital plan last year was already decided that the funds existed somewhere, that's why we didn't have to.
Okay, here's how it works now. When we approve, we don't go out and borrow right away. We wait until the funds are needed, then you borrow. Then you don't have all this borrowed money sitting. Uh, to pay the interest without getting it. So we've kinda shifted that, that we borrow it when we need it.
No, absolutely understand, but I thought last year's capital plan was structured that we were gonna try not to borrow this year, like the money.
No, we, we appropriated more money to the general portion of it, but. That is pretty much all eaten up with the maintenance activities. The borrowed portion, which this year is a hundred thousand, or proposed to be a hundred thousand. That would be for the repaving project.
Okay, I thought that the idea was not to borrow this year when we went through the.
We are hoping.
Working towards that.
Yeah, if he does not redo the street and the library bit, I mean, costs do not go over. We might be able to pay without borrowing, but if he goes and does the streets, then we'll have to borrow.
So I get, uh, if I can get these two contractors to agree, we're, I, I would still like to do something this year rather than nothing.
All right, Calvin.
Yeah, Jerry, you, you would, in here, there's four thirty-five, but then you just mentioned that you're looking at something more like two hundred next year.
Yeah, um, the volume of work. For four hundred thousand. When I put that together a year ago, year and a half ago, whenever it was, for this five-year plan. You know, I was toning on having experienced staff to do the work. And. And adequate staff to do the work. And I'm not gonna have that at this point in time.
So.
So I'm gonna scale it back to what is physically possible.
And is that the number we should be looking to approve today, something other than four thirty-five? Should it be?
I wouldn't have a problem if you wanted to lower the number to say two fifty, give me a little leeway, but. I think we've worked together long enough. I'm not gonna come in here and tell you to borrow four hundred thirty thousand, just on a whim.
And again, we're approving for this, so again, we can make.
Yeah, you're approving the pro- product, the, the project, not necessarily the dollar.
All right, any other questions? All right, roll call both, please.
Trusty Calvater?
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
President Langfeld.
Yes. H, SCADA system upgrade. I just wanna remind everybody that this is part of the, the well. And the P S C, so we've already approved this. What I have with the motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the S C or the SCADA system upgrade.
All right, Jerry, you wanna just say anything? Am I correct? This has already been covered in that?
Yeah, this is what's gonna tie in the new lift station out at Scenic Valley, the new well, upgrade the antenna system. Just a general upgrade of the entire system, yeah.
All right, any discussion or can we go to both? All right, roll call both, please.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
Trusty Calvater.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. I, inflow and infiltration repair.
This is a carryover. It's not, it was originally planned for this year, but it's not happening. It's just not gonna be able to be done. Uh, and that's the root of it, excuse me, the root of it is looking for. Locations where non-sanitary sewage enters sanitary sewage system. We have. Uh, well, kinda like the old Martin Salt commercial, if it rains, it pours. If it rains, it pours water in a wastewater plant that. Costs extra money for treatment. We're. Gonna work to eliminate as much of that as possible.
Jay, if I could add?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this, this item here is actually for the repair. We do have the, the system study for this year in the budget, which will roll over. And talking with Jerry and talking with, uh, our engineering, uh, that study actually needs to happen when the event is happening, so. Uh, wanna keep it in the budget because, just because we don't know when that date is. So that will be two hundred thousand dollars. From this year will be for the study, two hundred thousand dollars next year will be for the repair.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the inflow with infiltration repair.
I thought we already had one. No, man, okay, thank you.
Same.
All right. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Michael.
When you were talking about the study, when the event is happening, does that mean we have to wait for like terrain a bunch and then is when you're gonna run the study?
That's probably the only. Bad thing that has come out of the drought this year for the Village Cross Plains is the groundwater table has gone down. So now we don't have our infiltration and inflow has dropped way off this year, so. If we get a month of rain, then we'll be back in business.
Will this company providing the study be able to react that quickly?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's town and country that will be doing the study in conjunction with us. Uh, we have the test equipments already at the shop waiting.
That was just my question, the still logistics of, if it's raining a bunch, you know, can they do it at the same time?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Roll call both, please.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Come back to you.
Okay, Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
Trusty Calvater.
Yeah.
Trusty Hartman.
Yeah.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Jay. I don't even know, what, what is that? Vol?
Volume.
What is it?
The, it's pronounced volume.
Volume replacement mixer for this shit.
In the wet well at the wastewater plant, uh, Doug was recently down there and saw it. Uh, we have a row of four pumps that all the wastewater comes to the plant, goes through those four pumps. To lift it up and begins the treatment process. One of those pumps, number four, is a, a variable displacement pump. Uh, it's designed in conjunction with the, the B F D drive for the motor. To minimize the start and stops, which is where the large electricity use goes, so. It's the bottom half of the impeller that's at the bottom of the motor. Impeller spins within this volume. There are different designs. And creates the pressure to raise the water, is what it involves. Uh, the volume, the, this one, this particular pump, the volume is built into the floor of the wet well. Uh, that's what gives it its versatility. Well. Uh, fifteen years later, it's rusted away. So we, we need to get that replaced, and. The other issue is the continued ongoing, uh, grease buildup issue in the wet well. So while we have the wet well out of service to replace the volume. I would like to add a mixer. To keep the. The water. Water comes into what will approximately in the middle. And fans out, and. As it fans out, it loses another couple, three degrees in temperature. It's just enough that it lets the liquid dissolve grease that's in the wastewater. Solify. That attaches itself to the pumps, the rails, the floats, the walls. And creates a. A bit of a maintenance nightmare, and we could minimize that. It will allow us to also reduce the amount of enzymes we're adding to the wastewater to. Emulsify the grease. Because we can push it through instead of having to. Treat it. Um, right now, we spend. Uh, varies depending on the temperature and the volume of water, but. Uh, three to six thousand dollars a month on enzymes. And I would anticipate by adding this mixer, we'll be able to cut that by approximately a half. So. If, if you use the, even if you use four thousand and cut it in half to about twenty-four thousand dollars a year in chemicals. Five or six years, you're gonna have full payback and gain from there, so.
All right, do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the volume replacement and mixer addition.
I'll suck it. All right, any other discussion?
One quick question.
Go ahead, Michael.
When you say push through the grease, you mean you push it through so that the sledge tank collar would, it would be hauled then down to Iowa Dane, so that.
That's where it'll end up.
Yeah, that was my question.
It'll be, it'll remain in solid form.
It's just not being destroyed by the enzyme that's gonna get pushed through and taken away.
Correct.
Just my question, yep, just wondering.
All right, roll call both.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Calvater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
Can, wait, can I ask one other quick question, just with regard to that? When you say you have to like take down the wet well or turn it off, will that affect the sewer system at all? Cause you say you're gonna have to get in there and weld that? What happens in that case?
Uh, we'll actually be chipping out some existing concrete, uh, resetting the new volume and pouring. New rapid set concrete in that area. The wet well will have to be divided.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll only be able to use by two pumps is my anticipation while this process is taking place. So.
Okay, I was.
Four hundred thousand gallons a day. It's gonna take a pretty good wall to keep it divided, dry and.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious what the process was gonna be.
No, and if nobody can poop for thirty-eight hours.
Well, I was like, we're taking down where all the water's going.
Sounds like a challenge.
All right, let's get this thing off the towel here. Uh, we're at K, well, three construction and SCADA system upgrade. We just approved the bid for it, so do we need much discussion on this?
This, this one's actually for the well calls.
You just approved the bid for drilling the well hole. This is for actually drilling the well hole. But, yeah, we're pretty much committed.
I'll make a motion that we approve well number three, construction SCADA upgrades.
All right, the only discussion I'd like is let's make sure, uh, we get a meeting with the neighbors, so they have some input on. With the outside of the building and the landscaping, you kinda made that a promise to them, so.
Yeah.
We might just, let's just keep that in mind, that. All right, that's all. I have any other questions for anybody? All right, roll call both, please.
Trusty Calvater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yeah.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
Replace hydraulic bell operator.
Minute, some of you may have seen it, maybe none of you have. It's a machine we use to. Operate and exercise the water valves in the water distribution system. The one we got. The one we got is give or take about 15 years old and it's literally just wore out. Parts are no longer available for that model. Safety stop when it reaches max pressure does not work anymore. It's just time to replace it. We have roughly. 600 valves in the water system that are operated annually plus. For any special projects, we probably operate until around 700. Like the year we did Highway P North, we probably did close to 800 valve operations in a year. Valve takes the smallest valves in the system, take 19 full turns of the wrench. Some of the bigger ones are 28 turns. That we have right now. That's a bit much to do by hand anymore.
Fire motion.
I'll make a motion to replace the hydraulic valve hopper.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Otherwise, roll call both.
So, okay, so this is actually a machine that opens and closes though that you go out in the street and opening.
Yeah, pull the cover off, you put the wrench down in, then the machine is on a spring-loaded arm. You bring it over and set it on the coupler on the top of the wrench. It's got a rotation counter on it. You can adjust the hydraulic pressure, things like that. Makes it a one-man job.
All right.
All right, roll call both please.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Calabater.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Now.
I motion to approve the rapid response vehicle.
Second.
All right, just for, I don't know, is the chief on?
He has none.
Okay, I can take that and Kevin and Doug can go. This has been in the works. It's basically the new technology for firefighting. It's a rig where only two people need to be on. It uses high-pressure water droplets, so it's a real thin. We're real small droplets, so it's less water being used, they have less damage. There's a number, numerous cases where they get there and they're able to put out fighters quickly with. This, this vehicle. If you remember, they were looking to do it last year and we asked them to postpone it to this year. The, the cost that it shows here is 166. I believe at our last meeting, we're using 50,000 of reserve funds. So that should drop down to about 121,000. As it sits, but the fire district unanimously voted on, we own, we will have to pay the 55.59%. Any questions on it at all? Otherwise, let's do a roll call both.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Calabater.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, we're at number 10. Discussion, discussion and possible action to approve the 2022 through 2026 caporal improvement plan. That is just basically the other pages to this thing. I don't know if we really want to spend much time discussing. Things can change in a year.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2026 capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Kind of motion is second and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls, same, all right, 11. You should have that in front of you. The distribution of the preliminary 2022 base budget and supplements, this is the operating budget. There's no action to be taken tonight. We will be looking, hang on, Jerry, we'll be looking at the salary part of it. And I think September 13th and the rest of it on the 27th. So that's where you should be prepared. Jerry?
I just want to let you know, you're gonna get mine hopefully the end of this week. We just finished with a brush cleanup from the windstorm and. I got started working on the supplemental items today. For Bobby to send out to you for Bill the end of this week.
All right, very good.
So I did put up like a preliminary one in, but obviously Jerry's will be more accurate.
Oh, okay, so, all right. All righty. So, any future agenda items that you would like us to put on the agenda? Bill.
Can we talk, I don't know if this is still possible, with that property across on the mud. Oh, that is deteriorating. Can we, is that something we should bring up on?
I think we, we've talked about that before. I think what I would, if you have a real question, I would talk with Bill, because we've worked with them. Bill will give you the update aye.
Okay.
So we, we have, we have made efforts.
Oh, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to, yeah, there's no reason to do that. I would have all my bodies, Bill.
Well, I guess.
Jay, I'll, I'll ask this question, maybe it's not agenda-worthy just yet, but the, you had mentioned the beach or park before, or at least the playground over there? We haven't seen or heard anything from that in a year, a year, six months, at least six months. And I, I don't need an update on that, or we can, well, an agenda, or, and there's two parts to this. There's one, it's just the playground we talked about and funded. Part last, and then there was like a bigger question of the land.
Um, yeah, I think we touched on the land in closed session a couple of times on what we might want to do there. I'm not sure if you're looking for more than that. I mean, that's obviously.
Probably, yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
There's some, yeah. Okay, we leave it at that. I was, because I'm focused on it, so that would be a question.
No, that's, that's what I, that was one of my, yeah, we are piling up so many projects that I think we need. I'm feeling somewhat, to be honest with you, and I'm not even staff, a little overwhelmed in trying to get some of these things moving forward and continuing. You look at how many items we've talked about in closed session, those are all being constantly worked on. So I, I think we're overloading ourselves right now, but that's just my opinion. Listen, I, I don't know, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Trusty Calabater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yep.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yeah.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, I might should have said closed session one. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're good? All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session number two?
I move to go into closed session number two.
Second.
Second, roll call both please.
Trusty Calabater.
Yes.
Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. We are in closed session. I have that word. Is it on? All right, we are all of closed session number two. Do I have a motion for adjournment? All right, do I have a second?
I'll leave it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sure, good job.
Thanks, everybody.
Look at that, nine o'clock, I'm buzzing.